However, I'm sure that's on Mr. Young's mind as well.
Just talk about East Wycomico County.
We know we have to maintain our road system. It's imperative and we know the deferred maintenance that has happened as a result of the reduction of our highway user revenue funds. That's going to be an ongoing discussion. When you look at the airport, one of the things that jumps to mind that I've heard over the past 10 years of planning in Wycomico County is somehow trying to realign Hobbs Road so there's direct access from the airport to US Route 50. Again, it's unfunded, it's a recommendation, it's something that would require further study. However, if you're going to go after a grant or any federal or state funding to assist or offset the cost of the study, it's good to have an adopted plan. When you look at a rail line, we've got to ensure that there's future areas land use-wise for the expansion of industrial growth. We are very fortunate with our regional transportation network to not only have a regional airport, a Norfolk Southern-Northeast Rail Line, but also the port of Salisbury. So, when looking at that, we've got to make sure when we talk about land use that we've expanded industrial uses to accommodate potential utilization of the rail. Pedestrian and cyclist amenities, trying to create a regional network. We don't want these bike paths that go to nowhere. We don't want sidewalks that just stop in the middle of jurisdiction and then people walking out in the middle of the, or in the roadway, which is a dangerous situation. And it's something that, it's very interesting when you really start looking around between the city and the counties, or cities and towns in the county, you see these gaps in connectivity. And it's important that we try to make every effort to try to correct that situation. And then when you look at waterborne freight in the port of Salisbury, what's one of the most important things for the sustainability? We've got to make sure that we have adequate locations for dredge material placement sites. This plan does not say where they should go, it's saying it's a priority. It's something that we have to keep talking about because you don't want to get in a situation where you do not have adequate spoil dredge sites and then have a problem where you cannot dredge and then all of a sudden waterborne freight cannot make it up the Wycomico River. Any questions about transportation? As it seemed pretty straightforward.
Keith, in the, in the beginning of the introduction, you're talking about encouraging the participation and cooperation of all interested and affected parties. And I didn't see any mention there of Tri-County Council, which I thought maybe you might want to consider. That's on eight, your page would be eight-two. So, and, and, just for, I'm just, I'm just.
Absolutely, that's something that we can definitely look at. I'm going to go out on a limb and say, well, it's probably not in Chapter Eight. Remember, we talked about the connections to other chapters.
There's a lot more discussion of it further on, but I thought since you were talking about parties that are involved in transportation planning, that, you know, if you're including Maryland State Highway and MPO and everything else, it wouldn't, it'd probably be good to make some notation on Tri-County Council or Shore Transit.
I think, given your recommendation on page eight-two, we could add that right under the first bullet, since that is the coordination component that we're talking about.
It's the second bullet under objectives coordination. That helps you?
Correct. We're talking about the same place.
Okay, good, good.
I've got that noted.
And below that, it talks about explore the possibility of the development of a multimodal transportation and distribution complex. I thought we already had that with Shore Transit.
I think when you're looking at that, you're not just looking at Shore Transit, you're looking at such a distribution center like what is put down in Somerset County, and I believe it was Sam's Club. Again, the, given that we have rail, we have two major US freeways, we have waterborne access, if we could find a commodity that would work in this region that could come in by one mode of transportation, subsequently get offloaded, and then use another mode of transportation to get to its final destination, that would be advantageous for us competing economically in the region. I look at one of the examples as being Cato Oil. You have petroleum that's being barged in as waterborne freight, it's being unloaded, at which point it's unloaded, then the final distribution's taken place via tractor-trailer.
Okay.
For clarification purposes.
For the waterborne freight, the last figure here is from 2013.
What page are you on?
This is on eight-seventeen. And at that time, it was 939 short tons. I believe last year, there was some talk that the Army Corps of Engineers required at least 1,000 short tons in order for dredging to continue on the Wycomico River. Are there any updated figures? Have we gone back up to that 1,000 ton?
As of April, this was the most up-to-date figure released by the Army Corps of Engineers. There is, I don't even know if we would call it an informal policy, I've heard the same thing, that dredging operations could be jeopardized if we fall under a million short tons of commodity coming up the river, up the Wycomico River. I think what you see here, when you look at the chart, you're going to see that there is some type of correlation and a reduction in tonnage as the building industry also declined. You have a lot of stone aggregate coming up, that's one of the main things, as well as grain. Well, we're seeing a resurgence of the need for grain, as you've witnessed by the discussions you're having about poultry houses. I do not anticipate this trend continuing in a downward spiral. I've not heard anything from the Delmar River Water Transport Committee that's indicating that our funding is in jeopardy. We are just trying to keep at 1,000 short tons annually.
Or million, yeah.
A million, yeah. Yes, 1,000,000 short tons.
The, um.
Yep, yep, thanks.
On the table eight-five, which is on page, sorry, on page eight-twelve, you're listing state transportation improvements through 2030. I was wondering, we had a work session, and I was wondering whether or not you were incorporating this with what we discussed with Weston, because he had, he had a group of topics that he was presenting in a letter to the state, what we were requiring. And I was wondering if you incorporated those.
Was this part of the priority letter by any chance?
Yes, yes.
The priority letter are individual needs that we're looking at for the next six-year programming period for the state.
Right.
These go out to 2035 to 2040.
Right.
This is a state-generated list. It doesn't mean that we could not incorporate any of these, however, the funding consideration would be very low by the Maryland Department of Transportation at this time.
Well, I just felt that if these were priorities that we were trying to address with the state of Maryland, possibly it's something that should be, you know, if we thought it was important enough that it should be addressed in the comprehensive plan. And these weren't short-term goals, these were long-term solutions. Like, I'm not talking about extending a left-turn lane by, you know, 100 yards. These are more, these are larger situations, such as the egress from Route 50, trying to get onto the bypass, and trying to get off the bypass on the Snow Hill Road, where we feel they really short-sheeted Wycomico County in just getting this thing up as quickly as they could. So, I think we felt as a whole that there was a huge need on the part of the state to rethink how they would maybe address those concerns.
What's that, the project you mentioned, as well as the access on and off to Route 50, onto the bypass, as well as Route 13 off, coming off the bypass, is included in the draft priority letter.
Right.
Mr. Young and myself will be in front of council, we're trying to get it scheduled for your next upcoming meeting to have a work session to go over the projects, at which time, if there's any of these projects that you'd like to add, even though they're long-range considerations. Again, it's a template-driven letter. The one thing, without getting into too much details, there was a passage of House Bill 1013 by the General Assembly this last session. When you're looking at capacity expansion projects, or what they consider major projects over $5 million, there is a litany of different research and data studies you have to provide to justify that request, even for their consideration. It wasn't something that M.D. was in support of, however, it did pass through the Assembly. So, as we're maneuvering through that conversation at a work session, these are items that we can talk about.
Okay. The only other thing is the immediate priorities, your one to five years. I wasn't so sure that all of those projects were immediate priorities. But, I don't know how, I don't know what, what method was used to put those in here, how that was.
Well, when the, when the first draft, when the first draft was done, it was back in 2010. So, it's interesting that you bring up some of the immediate priority. I think that's something that's at the discretion of the council, whether they see that some projects should come off, whether or not they see that some projects should have their timeframe changed. It's interesting, because I just took a few minutes earlier today and looked over the listing again to get acclimated with it.
Right.
When I look at immediate priority, Neil or Millard Extended, I put question marks by it.
Right.
You know, if you would like staff to come back, maybe with a little bit of a refined recommendation, as it stands right now, I think there's at least two or three that might be able to move from an immediate priority to either off the list or to another timeframe. And keep in mind, there's no commitment. Even, this is a phasing discussion. It doesn't mean that just because they're in an adopted comprehensive plan as an immediate priority, that they're going to get funded. Some of these are carryover projects from the 1998 comprehensive plan.
I think it's good that everything be on the same page.
Does that help with funding sometime, though? Do, do some agencies say, well, it wasn't on your immediate priority list, so therefore in your comprehensive plan, so therefore it won't get funding?
I think as planners, we could justify that it's within the context of the comprehensive plan.
Okay, as long as it's.
And that would take precedent, ever prioritization, because as we all know, there might be a project that comes up that, that has implication on one of these recommendations and either advances it, or it might deter, you know, it coming to fruition in a certain time frame.
So, maybe a work session coordinated with your department and with Weston Young?
I think we look at this list collectively with the priority letter, keeping in mind that the priority letter is for improvements along state-owned or maintained roadways.
Sure.
When you look at the priorities within here, outside of Table eight-five, you're looking at county projects.
Right.
But we can do that with Table eight-five.
All right, if you help us differentiate between the two, then we'll go forward.
Absolutely.
Okay. We'll put that on the list. Okay.
Okay, moving right along, if there's no further questions, we get into Chapter Nine, Community Facilities. Again, overarching theme, this is a vision document, our policy document, that's looking at future growth and development. In order to have that future growth and development, you have to be able to support it with adequate community facilities to maintain or to increase your current level of service. When you're looking at Chapter Nine, you're going to find information that's not just exclusive to the unincorporated portion of Wycomico County. It does talk about wastewater treatment, it talks about sewer systems. While we don't have our own wastewater treatment system in an unincorporated portion of Wycomico County, it doesn't mean that that won't be a future consideration someday. You're going to find just background information about the state-mandated stormwater management program that the Wycomico County, that Wycomico County administers. You're going to find information about solid waste and the recycling program, which is always, you know, changing like other facilities. Educational facilities, looking at both public and private, as well as college and other higher-level academic institutions. You're going to find background information about libraries, ferries, the civic center, tourism, law enforcement, sheriff's office, police departments in Salisbury, Fruitland, Delmar. You're going to see a little bit of background information about corrections, as well as fire rescue EMS and health services. Overarching theme, when you look at the implementation strategies, continue the coordination that we're already doing. One of the things I did want to highlight, because it was part of a previous discussion about where is it located in the plan about the expansion of urban service districts? This is where you're going to find that as an implementation strategy. It's not meant to provide a roadmap of how to do it, that's going to be discussions that would take place between a county, Wycomico County, and unincorporated jurisdictions that have, or, I'm sorry, incorporated jurisdictions with their own water and sewer authority. However, it's important to reference this in there for future discussion and dialogue or continuation through further studies.
Should there be some note in there as to whether or not the county as a whole should be looking at some type of wastewater treatment authority itself?
Within here, there is the recommendation to consider becoming a, creating a water and sewer authority.
Okay.
As well as the use of packaged treatment plants and where they should occur, or inversely, where they should not occur.
Part of it, there's a, a mention here that annexations are the preferred method for a local jurisdiction to provide public service to new areas. I don't know if that's always a preferred method.
Absolutely. I, I think that's up for discussion. We can always change the wording around a little bit and start making certain that we don't have any implied meanings that create unintended consequences. However, it's important that, again, from a policy standpoint, we have something like that in this document, so as we start looking at other companion plans, such as the Water and Sewer Plan, which is the real regulatory tool of what's going to get served, how it's going to get served, we can go back and show the connection with the comprehensive.
Mr. Hall, as Mr. Hall has, and the county council already amended the Water and Sewer Plan to provide for packaged treatment facilities in rural areas.
There, there is a discussion about, yeah, yes. That has occurred. Thank you. Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Gray. Anybody have any questions? Again, this is really encyclopedia-type information. It gives someone outside the community a glimpse into the services and amenities that Wycomico County has, without going into great detail, and it also creates those connections to the companion documents, such as the comprehensive water and sewer plan that we just previously mentioned.
Is come, we're still requiring that 50% reduction in impervious surface area?
As part of development considerations, or specifically what are you referencing to a bullet within here?
Yeah, I'll give you a page here.
Okay.
Page nine-three.
I can probably find it real quick.
I don't need that answer now.
That's okay, but I'd like to at least make sure that we've got a reference point on it.
It's just below the first set of bullet points. The policy required in Comar for redevelopment specifies a 50% reduction in pervious surface. I know that was a really big thing, like, four years ago, but I, I thought.
Still, it's still part of the stormwater management ordinance that's being administered through the county.
Wasn't sure if it had been relaxed any.
No, not, at this point, it has not.
Okay, all right.
Any further questions, or should we continue on with Historic and Cultural Preservation? This one's about as simple as it gets.
Oh, I'm sorry, there was one other thing in nine-five, I don't mean to, in nine-five, you reference, it needs to be updated. You're referencing Bennett Middle School, and you're talking about how a new school, a new building is being proposed, that needs to be updated to include, it says the next major project is construction of a new Bennett Middle School. It's already been done, so it'd have to be updated.
Okay, there might be two places. The paragraph I'm looking at, which is the second paragraph.
This is the last paragraph?
Yes. The next major construction project was the new Bennett Middle School, which was open for the 2015 school year.
Okay, I must have an outdated one, then.
Well, we need to make sure that we have the most current one, so we're looking at the same time.
I've got a, yeah, I've got a PDF, and that's what I'm following, it's probably outdated.
The most recent draft of the update was done approximately in April of this calendar year. Again, some of the tabular information, as we all know, is always going to be changing, but we tried to get the most current snapshot possible.
Yeah, I'm not aware, I just thought, that's good, okay, all right, great.
These are good things to point out, because, again, given that it is a working document, there might be something in here that's a recommendation, or that's just narrative that has occurred.
Okay.
Or possibly has not occurred, or want to occur.
Good, that'll cut out half my questions.
Here, you want my bullet?
Yeah, we're good.
Chapter 10, Historic and Cultural Preservation, it's an inventory chapter. It's what we have, it's what we have as far as county-designated historic districts, which there are two of them, one in Kowalko, one in Whitehaven. It talks about the county historic park, we all know as Pemberton Historic Park. It mentions the city's historic districts, again, keeping in mind, one of the things we heard out on the street with the extensive public outreach of this document was, it needs to be a coordinated effort between the county and wherever you, possible municipal jurisdictions. You'll get into the National Register of Historic Places, how many, where they're located, what's the history behind them. And then you start getting into preservation programs, as well as incentives, that are either offered at the county, state, and/or federal level. When you look at implementation strategies, there is no regulatory component, these are just considerations. Apparently, the most important one, or evidently, is making sure we preserve our historical cultural amenities that define who we are as a community, as, as well as a county, excuse me. And going back to future growth and development, making sure that's compatible, especially as infill occurs in these historic districts or historic areas. Staff's available to answer any questions in council.
I didn't see the Chipman Center in there, but I'm not quite sure how it's.
That, that is a very good question. When you look in the documents, I think you will see Chipman is either going to be one or two places.
I've got, I still have the O.
No, it's good, these are good, because sometimes there are distinctions between the level of significance historically. So, for example, if you're on the National Register of Historic Places, that is the highest standard with regards to historic preservation, and there are regulatory tools of, or regulations of what you can and you cannot do on the structure.
Sure.
If you're part of the Maryland Inventory of Historic Places, that means there is some historic or cultural relevance.
Okay.
However, there is not any regulatory tools, so therefore, that's why you might not see Chipman, is because it's not on the National Register. And that's what we really outlined, was the National Register sites, all 21 of them.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't an oversight, that's, that's fine.
No, I have a feeling that it's probably part of the Maryland Inventory of Historic Places, which there's 675 of them in the county, so too many to mention.
Okay.
Other than that, again, it's straightforward, it's preservation-based, it's program-based, there are no regulatory functions or requests being asked out of, from this chapter. If there's no questions, I'm going to continue moving on. Housing and Community Development, there's a lot of overlap in this chapter, with Chapter Three, the Community Profile, you're going to find information about housing characteristics, a little bit of narrative about the importance of affordable slash workforce housing. Another thing that we're preparing for with the graying of the shore is aging in place, and the discussion and the importance of being able to provide amenities that, as a person continues to age, there's no need to transition out of their home to an assisted living facility, you transition, or you make accommodations within the house you're living in. Student housing, housing condition, I'm not going to get into all the different qual, all the different data sets there, as well as local housing assistance and programs, whether it's for first-time homeowners and trying to increase first-time homeownership in the county, or whether it's financial difficulty paying utility bills, for example.
Any questions?
Chapter 12, Economic Development and Financial Sustainability, I think the title says a lot of it. How are we going to preserve the quality of our community? It's a lot about looking at the tax revenue versus the tax effort. Within this, you're going to find information about what is generally referred to as the Sage Report, 2012 Wycomico County Financial Sustainability Report. You're going to find information about the economic profile characteristics, employment figures, labor force. Remember, they were all part of Chapter Three as well, that's the overlap we're talking about. The importance of the commercial and the industrial sector, the agricultural sector, the manufacturing sector. And then you start getting into what are our programs and incentives. Some might be state programs, some might be county programs. When you start looking at some of the state programs, enterprise and job creation tax credits, when you start looking at some of our local initiatives or efforts, I think it's Salisbury-Wycomico Economic Development Corporation, SWED, as well as the Tri-County Council of the Lower Eastern Shore. Tourism is mentioned, because as we are a county with an abundance of natural resources, open space, and beautiful features, we're going to see hopefully expansion in the agri-tourism, as well as heritage tourism. A lot of the implementation strategies do not have, well, I don't think any of them have a regulatory component, and you'll see that it's a lot of continued support, especially of the ag sector, something that this council is discussing right now, as far as policy, is trying to make sure you do not create incompatibility of uses. And specifically, I think germane to the discussion, the broader discussion, is looking at residential uses and agricultural, but the same goes for other uses. You wouldn't want to have an intense manufacturing use next to a single-family residential subdivision. But we've got to ensure that we can have the appropriate land for these expansions of these sectors.
For the list of major employers, Labanal is still listed.
Yes.
And also Purdue Agribusiness, which I don't believe is relocated yet, but is, is getting ready to relocate to Delaware.
I think what we'll do is, right before, this is my recommendation for your concurrence or consideration, is right before we go to public hearing with this document, we take a major sweep at all the data again. So, some figures may change, some Labanals may come off, some other figures might increase, and we ensure, again, that at the time of the public hearing prior to adoption, it is the current snapshot of the pulse of this community. You're going to find information about building permits issued, again, just overall snapshot of the various sectors that we have in the county. Any questions? If not, we're going to move on to mineral resources. This chapter is required by state law, it talks about our current operations, our current regulations, our current, is there any considerations not to continue the rhyme? Special exception process, the need to inventory abandoned or reclaimed sand and gravel sites, because those are the resources that we're extracting in this region. Also, when you look at it, one of the things that is a good coordination effort between planning and public works, reducing the impacts to county infrastructure. When you have mining operations, it's typically heavier loads, larger vehicles transporting them, and they can compromise a road structure or the integrity of county roads. So, therefore, in future siting considerations, just like this council's discussed or proposed, with changes to legislation about access to poultry farms, it might just be a consideration that we work with Mr. Young and see if there's any type of evaluation we should be looking at of where these future sites will be located, and whether or not they'll have any potential impact.
Okay.
For the sand and gravel operations, are these total acres that are being mined currently, or?
No, this is total acres of the site as a whole.
Okay, because I know Chaney Enterprises owns some up in the Hebron area, not sure if they are currently mining, but they, I know they have the license on the land, so I don't know if that.
Yeah, that's what, that's what this is reflecting, is who has the license.
Okay.
However, again, we'll sweep the document one last time. I think we had said in the beginning, and, you know, it's mind-numbing when you think, there's probably, I don't know, approximately 150 tables of data in here from probably at least 150 different sources. That's always going to be evolving, so imagine at the date that you adopt this, there could be a new sand and gravel operation come online, that wouldn't necessitate amendment to this plan.
Any other questions?
Gentlemen, in conclusion, plain implementation, compilation, cut and paste from all the various chapters, all put into one chapter for, I guess, ease of the reader. As planners, when we look at these documents, it's not untypical that instead of going through every part of a 200-and-some-page document, we cut right to the chase and go to the implementation chapter. Because the implementation chapter, again, is taking everything that is in each chapter and compiling it in one place, that's easy to read and gives you an overall idea of where we're heading in support of future growth and development, as well as protecting the natural environment and features, and making sure that our community facilities are on pace to meet future demands.
Yeah, one thing I picked up in here.
Yes, sir.
Under agriculture, it says, "Explore and encourage the use of best management practices to improve techniques in farming for more efficient methods." And I know that we've had people use the comprehensive plan and said we're violating our plan by approving poultry houses, as we've been approving them. But this is contradictory to what they're saying, because our plan addresses that, first of all, we look at best management practices that the poultry companies use, and secondly, what they're doing is more, trying to be more efficient, so.
I, I think it's challenging when, when anyone looks at a document of this magnitude, it might be easy to start mixing sentences together to maybe support or not support an opinion or a position. What we're making sure of is that you're going to have a document that. What we're making sure of is that you're gonna have a document that is adopted, that is consistent with state guidelines and regulations, it meets the twelve visions of the state as far as what a comprehensive plan is. In addition, we are trying to reduce any incompatibility as a function of land use. That, that is the goal here.
Like I say, people use this comp plan, you know...
And, and what you'll see is that, you know, going back to that, which is a very interesting observation, that's why when you see statements like, "Direct growth to designate growth areas with existing or planned services," that doesn't mean, or it's not meant to be implied, that we don't want county to incur, occur in an unincorporated portion of the county. It doesn't mean that at all, there's a balance. What we wanna do is, we are, we're ag county with an ag economy, and we have to ensure the continuation of operations, and the more residential uses that go into agricultural areas, the harder it is for those areas to be used as farms, and we do have larger-scale farms, that, that is our economy. Staffs available to answer any questions? There's accompanying maps, I did not mention the appendices, however, there's appendices about the housing programs, there's maps about the historic districts, enterprise zone, uh, in support of economic development, also about transportation, the other chapters we've mentioned. If there is no, if there are no further questions, it's staff's recommendation that we come back at the next work session. In addition to the priority letter, I'd like to request, you know, contingent upon the council's concurrence, that we start either discussing the agriculture chapter or the land use chapter. These are two chapters that we need to go over exhaustively, and the reason I say that is because when you look at the agricultural chapter, what is gonna be put in front of this legislative body is the decision, do we proceed with doing what's known as a priority preservation area element, which, acronyms and everything aside, do we want a state-certified ag program? And if we want that, there's certain components that are in this draft that meet those expectations. Land use specifically, as we mentioned before, we're in very good shape. You've had a plan adopted since nineteen ninety-eight, you've had a zoning code amendment and a comprehensive zoning since two thousand four, land use is predicated on that. All the local jurisdictions for future growth areas are consistent with our zoning, you've had one zoning change since two thousand four. That means that we've got more than a great foundation, we just need to make some adjustments here and there to really try to eliminate any non-conforming uses, or areas where there's been a change in the use.
Which, uh, chapter would you like to discuss in the next minute?
I'd like to go ahead and start with the agricultural chapter.
Okay.
If that's okay with the council.
Okay.
That would be Chapter six.
Okay, um, now, would we have time to do Chapter six in the work session with Weston Young as well on the priority transportation, or do you think you just wanna do Chapter six?
I'd like to do Chapter six and the priority letter. The priority letter is a function of timing, the state is getting in, heavy into their budget process, in addition, we do have the Maryland Association, uh, the Maryland Association Counties Meeting, at which time, we'd like to have that letter available, even if it's in draft form, to discuss with certain state representatives.
Wonderful. Any other questions? Keith, thank you very much, Jack.
Thank you for your time, as always.
Excellent job.
Thank you.
Entertained. Entertained the motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Me as adjourned.